Okay, good morning. Let's go to the meeting where I received orders Friday through 22nd, 2018, time is by 8:34. Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Hi, this is Webble.
Present.
Tammy Frilling Bogus.
Yes.
Patrick Brown.
Here.
Deb Frank Finan.
Here.
Patricia Avery. Richard Hilton.
Here.
Steve Summers.
Present.
Jim McGuire.
Here.
Charles Smith. Diane Marlin. Dennis Roberts.
Here.
Katina Wiltshire.
Here.
We have a quorum.
My point of view, we have a new person Carol Mitten here, who's here in place of Diane Marlin. Welcome Carol.
Thank you.
Our new city administrator.
So it'll raise our average heights up too, if I have to see that.
Yeah, she's in. Happy to do what I can.
Hopefully it raises other things up too. All right, um, any audience participation? Let's see, none. Pam, on the next time, could you put audience participation after the approval of the agenda? Make the agenda item two.
All right.
Uh, seek approve the agenda. Move by Mr. McGuire, second by Mr. Roberts. Uh, discussion. Senate on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Uh, seek approve the RPC minutes for the meeting of April 22nd, 2018.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Move by Mr. Roberts.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. McGuire. Thank you. May discussion. Senate on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Consular reports. Ms. Murphy.
So, um, the overall fund balance at the end of May was a little over ten, nearly 10.3 million. That increased slightly from 9.8 million at the end of April. Our outstanding receivables were over 772,000. That's again primarily due to delays at the state level for the preschool for all program. We did get $81,000 in the last week, but we're still in arrears with regard to preschool for all. So this is not atypical and we are in contact with the state regarding those delays in reimbursement.
Is that it? Okay, let's go on to, uh, why don't we just go to list of bills and we'll have the motion to accept everybody's and file after that.
Pardon me?
Well, if you don't, the consular report, let's go on to list of bills.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. So then the, um, the list of bills is fairly robust for this period because we've had lots of increases in rental assistance payments, workforce development contract payments, as well as weatherization work. So it's not atypical for this time of year, but there are lots of bills for this period, so.
Questions, Ms. Murphy, on any of this? Marlin, uh, second by Mr. Roberts, the, uh, reports and bills on the aisle. Move by Dave, second by Mr. Summers. Discussion, Senate on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Action items, uh, FY 18 budget amendments, Ms. Murphy.
So, um, you have a list of general operating fund and the early childhood fund budget amendments, which are additions to the FY 18 budget. This is newer increased revenue that will be beginning in the next few months. These total nearly 1.6 million dollars and I'd like to go through some of these. Each of them has a brief narrative explanation for your review. The first one is the emergency shelter for families and the general operating fund for $65,000 and that's to accommodate alternating grant years on United Way funding to allow us to provide case management services, supportive services, and overnight accommodations at our homeless shelter at 302 Park Street. Second one is supportive housing for the disabled. This is for disabled adults and it will subsidize some rental housing as well as supportive services for that population in the amount of $26,000. The, the next one is the justice system diversion. Again, this accommodates alternating fiscal years. This is the Rantool Justice Diversion System. This provides case management services to clients that have been involved in the criminal justice commit, criminal justice system in an effort to reduce recidivism and to promote positive outcomes. Department 614 is the energy efficiency database development. This is a contractor in agreement with Ameren to provide for the development of a wide-ranging database and an associated website portal to track and report metrics related to energy efficiency initiatives. This is in the amount of 565,000. This will be a multi-year project, but this is the first period that we need to include these appropriations in FY 18. Uh, the next one is subsidized utility assistance in the amount of 30,000 and this is again in agreement with United Way to provide utility assistance to households that are moving into subsidized housing. With regard to the early childhood fund, we have the preschool for all expansion, Romanumeral three. This is an award of one-time funding in the amount of 756,889. We are really gratified to receive this one-time funding. It was a competitive proposal. It's going to allow us to do and address a number of health and safety issues at our Head Start sites, including Rantool, Urbana, and some work in Savoy as well. So this will allow us to address ADA issues to make sure that our parking lots, sidewalks, ramps are all ADA compliant. We're going to be able to do some window replacements, some energy efficiency painting, signage, exterior work. There's lots of infrastructure needs at our sites because we are in aging buildings. So this is a, a welcome one-time award. Uh, the last one is the mental health counseling grant number two. This is a second award, again alternating years from the mental health board. This will allow us to provide enhanced mental health services at each of our Head Start centers. We will be able to employ a social, emotional, behavioral specialist that will be located at each of our sites to provide more intensive therapy to our children and support to our parents and families. So I ask for approval of those amendments.
Okay. Triggering the motion to approve the FY 18 budget amendments, the turn fund 75 and fund number one. So moved.
I'll second it.
Move by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to ask, um, do you already have a to-do list for the Head Start improvements that are the ADA and other regional work?
Yes, we've been working on, um, those lists with architects, um, and with our management team since the end of May.
So you know what you're going to do with the money and you're happy to have it?
Absolutely. We know exactly what we're going to do with the money.
Okay.
We're moving, we're moving ahead.
Any other questions? Discussion. Okay, see none on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is, uh, the 2018-2019 family priority list. Lynn, are you doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning. Uh, the 2018-2019 family priority list is, uh, has been updated from the previous year with no changes. This is a priorities list to identify families with the most need in our community and offer them services within our program. This is also a requirement of the Office of Head Start, um, to make sure that we are identifying the most, um, the most needs in our community. I recommend that you approve the 2018-2019 family priorities list.
Do you have the motion?
So moved.
Move by Ms. Finan, second by Mr. Summers. This has to be updated every year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. See move for the discussion, uh, on paper.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. And next is, uh, cost of living adjustment funding increase.
Yes. The Office of Head Start recently announced a 2.6 percent cost of living adjustment increase to, um, Head Start programs. We will be receiving, um, a total of 132,727 dollars, um, to, um, increase staff salaries and fringe benefits and offsetting any other higher operating cost. I recommend approval of the Head Start, early Head Start cost of living adjustment increase.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
I'll give it to Richard Hilton, second by Mr. Roberts. Discussion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
How does this work with our union contracts?
Um, so we have, um, we have a statement in the contract about if adjustments or cost of increases. Currently, um, on a yearly basis, they get a 1% increase. Whatever we receive from the Feds covers that 1% typically. So they've already been given at 1% starting March 1, 2018. They will be given another 1.6% retroactive to March 1, 2018.
So the language says that they get a minimum of 1% and then they get the remainder of whatever the federal gives them.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Move for the discussion. All right, Senate on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, um, Head Start, Head Start report. Bring it.
So I just want to identify some highlights, since the last time you all met. In April, we completed our federal monitoring review, um, which I believe was very successful. The, um, um, the end of the, the week, we had a very, very good report, um, from the federal team leader. We are still waiting for the actual outcomes report, um, which we probably will not receive until end of July, August. We are also in the process of recruitment. We are, um, increasing our efforts to reach further into the rural communities and participate in as many neighborhood events as possible, such as the Juneteenth, um, event at Douglas Park, which was this last Saturday. Also the Jody Rhodes annual event at King Park, um, coming up this Saturday. And also we're going to, um, again participate in the Champaign County Celebration Parade on July 4th. We are looking into Rantool and seeing if we can participate in their parade as well. Again, we're doing a lot of door-to-door, um, introducing ourselves to new businesses within the community and engaging any new partners. As you, as Betty talked about earlier, we've had several new funds come into the program. We've been awarded by the Disabilities Board to continue our social emotional development specialist. There was an increase of $17,960. The mental health board also provided us with new funds to, um, allow the program to hire social skills and prevention coaches who will go into the classrooms and support the children, um, who really need work on, who need to work on social skills development and as well as, is working with our, our staff and our families. So that was really exciting for us. We also received, um, a continuing, well, a new five-year grant for the preschool for all FY 19 and also the expansion. The preschool for all, um, we received 712,151 dollars and that was an increase of 35,404 dollars from last, or from the previous years. The expansion grant, we actually received 470,800, $800. This was flat funding, but we are still able to continue the services that we've been providing within our community. Betty already mentioned that we received the one-time additional funding and in addition to working on the health and safety updates to the facilities, we will be also updating our creative, our, sorry, our educational curriculum, which hasn't been updated for 17 years. So we are very excited to do that, especially for our preschool classrooms and any materials, equipment that also need to be updated will be used, those funds will be used to do that. In addition, um, since, uh, about March, we received preschool for all expansion FY 18, summer programming funds, and this allowed our program to provide summer school services to our current day children who would have not received any services over the summer. And we focused our efforts on those children and helping them get ready for school, some more four and five-year-olds. We are, that's a total of 50,000 children that are being served in addition to our full-day classrooms in Rantool. Those children are receiving also six-hour programming services, five days a week. So again, this is going to give them a good boost for those going to kindergarten and for those children who will be going into kindergarten next year. So that is my update.
Any questions for me, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, um, uh, part of the area that I represent in Urbana is the, the Lyman neighborhood, which is really very close by, just across the street, really on Washington, East, West. Have you ever attended any of their, their ward meetings as a part of your outreach? That'd be the, um, you know, they run the community garden, the Lyman neighborhood community garden, but they also have monthly meetings, um, in the satellite room of a library in downtown Urbana. And, um, I know that the Aspen Core population is down quite a bit right now, but their houses are going to be renovated this year by the TWG owners and it might be of value to them to get to know a little bit more about Head Start programming. So I'd invite you to try to connect with Anna Barnes or, um, Keith Harris, who's a minister at, um, let's see, Methodist Church on campus.
Okay.
Uh, to come and visit them during one of their meetings and maybe give them a show and tell about your programming.
I would love to do that.
Yeah, I think they'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Do you have any questions? Motion by social reports and file.
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Move by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Summers. On paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, vote here with me, Ms. Murphy.
Sure. So as we mentioned, the one-time preschool for all funding, um, good and bad news about that funding. The good news is we received that funding. The bad news is there's an accelerated timeline associated with that. So it required an obligation date of August 31st with a final expenditure date and completion of all renovation work by the end of November. So given that accelerated timeline, given the fact that we've utilized the architectural firm of Reef Stack Reed and Company in 2003 for the major renovation in Rantool, um, and they've retained all specifications and drawings, we felt it was most expedient to use this firm. They're familiar with our sites, they're familiar with the federal and the state guidelines related to daycare centers. So they will be preparing and are preparing right now, bids, bid specifications, technical specifications for us. They've completed, um, full site audits, audits of the entire building at Savoy, the one in Rantool, and a brief one in Urbana, since that's our newest facility. So once we, um, receive those technical specifications, I'll prepare bid packets. We'll get that posted for the 30-day time period in accordance with our procurement policies. And then once we get those bid documents back, we'll bring that back to this board for you to review the bids and documents and to select vendors. So it's an accelerated timeline. August 31st is not far away to get these under contract, so we're looking forward to that. The agreement with Reef Stack is in the amount of 57,400 dollars. So they've, um, again, their engineers and architects have been working hard to start developing this because the repairs will be extensive and I know Dick Hilton's aware of this in Savoy, so. Our buildings need a lot of work in that regard. Since we've had them do, um, an overall inspection on the, the status of these buildings, what we're looking at is we've identified additional health and safety issues that we would like to approach the feds. Brandy and I are going to talk to the regional office to see if we can even secure federal money to complement the state money to help us address more issues that we've identified at these sites. So if not now, in the future, so I think we'll be well positioned to continue to try to secure funding to get our buildings where they need to be. The second part of that is that, um, the, the closeouts for a number of our state grants are occurring, so we're busy closing out. We're being, beginning work on FY 19. We're also developing a number of new initiatives, some of which we talked about in the budget amendments, but there are others that we're working on as well. DCO will be here for a week to review our workforce development program. They're going to do an extensive programmatic and fiscal review, so they'll be here the week of July 16th. So we have a busy, busy summer ahead.
Any questions for, uh, that, for that? Okay, uh, keep wanting to back it through, HR.
Thank you and good morning. The human resources reports contain information about new hires, transfers, and exits from April 19th through June 11th. I'd be happy to take any questions throughout those transitions. The HR department is currently working on multiple recruitment strategies for all divisions of the RPC, mostly due to expansion. So it's a good thing to be really busy right now in the HR department. Uh, we are working on RPC, excuse me, recruiting strategies, of course, to attract and retain the top talent, as many of us know, in a very tight labor market. And the HR department recently has also been working on developing the talent pool here in Champaign County when we assisted over 100 youth employment services students at Centennial High School with work eligibility and payroll tax form completion, things that everybody takes care of and completes on their first day of employment, but for youth employment, it might have been the very first time they've ever heard of an I-9 or a W-4 form. Um, and we also spend significant time, um, stressing the importance to students securing the privacy of their social security cards, specifically saying, do not sort of picture that card on your cellphone and email it anywhere. So, uh, that was fun. My staff has been, my team has been working on processing several, um, 100 payroll and work eligibility forms for the summer youth program and we're wrapping that up and many students are beginning, in many cases, their first experience of working on the job. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Does anyone, the large number of agencies, is that because of the expansion?
Uh, we are expanding in many areas of RPC. I'm sure, um, Delitzo will be speaking more about that in his presentation.
All right, any other questions? Okay, let's move on to, uh, what do you want to report for Lisa? Anybody stepping in? I guess not. Let's go to Rita.
Good morning. We, uh, just started the process of, uh, public outreach for our loan range, loan range transportation plan 2045. We are focusing our outreach on the communities or the population that we have identified through the Title VI. Those are the minority populations. Our first event was supposed to be yesterday, but due to the rain was canceled. We have two public events going on this weekend, one at King Park and the other one, I don't recall exactly where. But we'll have, uh, this summer about 20 different, uh, public events that we'll be attending to collect, um, input from the people regarding the future of the transportation system and also existing problems in our transportation system. And that's one of the projects that we have been focusing on in the last few months. We also have been working on, uh, collecting data, zip code data from employees in our, um, area covered by Oyoa, four counties. We have been sending letters to several agencies, including your agencies, uh, that I already received responses from you. We are in the process of, uh, preparing workforce profile for the four counties based on data that we have requested and that project is moving along at this time. Also, uh, last month, we submitted, uh, six different grant applications to IDOT for planning projects for a total amount of over $1 million. Then, uh, those grants will be announced on July 1st. Hopefully we'll get at least half of them, we'll see. Um, but there are six different projects that we submitted as part of the call for projects from IDOT. Last month, we also hosted the electronic recycling collection. It was very successful. However, we saw some downtown period within the collection, then we are hoping to make it more efficient the next time that we have, uh, the electronic recycling collection. Uh, we also coordinated Bike to Work Day early in May, was really successful. We, um, received, uh, information about 500 people who register through the website to participate and show up at the different stations that we have in place. And probably more people bike to work that day, but through, through registration and showing up at the stations was about 500 people that did it that day. And other than that, uh, next week, probably Delitzo will be talking about that, we'll be going with Champaign County First to Washington DC to talk about different transportation projects and, um, for that purpose, we have prepared an assessment of, uh, the infrastructure condition on, uh, in Champaign County that, uh, will be distributing there to the different people that we'll be meeting with. That's all that I have.
Question for Rita. This is my honor.
Thank you, thank you Rita. And Pius actually sent me that packet and I haven't had a chance to look at it. And, um, as we're ready to go to Washington and the transportation study, and this is something I've brought up before, um, obviously we have a few issues that we've already talked about, um, including the grade improvement, first street, bike, bike path, but one of the things that I think has been an issue is 74 between here and Danville, St. Joe, um, people coming from St. Joe to Champaign and Curtis Road between 130, um, and 45, um, and even 57. But the biggest issue I've seen is the people traveling back and forth between Danville and Champaign and the accidents that have increased significantly. Part of it is because of construction that's going on there to do repairs, but doing something with that interstate, uh, which I'm sure is on a lot of people's radar, but doing something to improve that, you know, but all the way around Champaign and Urbana, if you could. Thank you.
Good.
So, um, Champaign County First has a process where they vet projects and so, um, all of us who go get together and develop, um, ideas about which projects we want, they also have to be approved by the chamber board. And then when we go, we all stick to the projects that are on our list. So that's not to say the projects you're raising are not important, certainly things that we can keep on our radar for next year's trip, but it's too late now to include a new project for this trip. I will tell you the, um, 74-57 interchange is one we talk about every time because it is one of the most dangerous interchanges in the state, if not the most. And so, um, you know, IDOT continues to slowly move toward, they're making incremental progress toward that replacement, but we continue to talk to the feds about it and, um, but I would encourage you, um, you know, for the county reps who are representing, um, for Champaign County First, talking to them about those projects and now Rita knows, so that we can start thinking about that for the next year's trip.
Further questions, discussion? All right, thank you. Let's move on to Delitzo, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It's been a year and
Yay!
21 days.
Since I assumed this role.
So thank you so much for, for the opportunity. I will, um, highlight my, uh, report by stating that, uh, since, um, starting last year, uh, one of the things that we have worked on, as you've heard in the various reports presented today, has been to look at, uh, not only getting more funding for the organization, but given that, uh, we operate in a, an uncertain environment, diversifying our funding. So since June 1st of last year, uh, as you've heard, we have, uh, submitted a total, uh, budget amendments for FY 2018 in the tune of 2.6 million dollars. Uh, we're also, um, received some new funding of 1.5 million dollars, bringing a total of about 4.2 million dollars. We have other funding We have other funding opportunities that we have pursued that have not heard. Those total about $2.6 million. In terms of funding diversification, one of the things I wanted to highlight, because you've heard a lot about AMRIN and other entities that we're working with, is to establish more of a public-private partnership with other entities that do work that is sort of similar to what we do. And to explain a little bit further about the AMRIN partnership, I think in previous meetings, I've presented to you some of the negotiations that have been going on for the last few months with all the major utilities in our state related to energy efficiency work that has been made available as a result of legislation that was passed in 2016 and signed by Governor Rauner. The energy efficiency industry nationwide is about a $7 billion industry. And I think in Illinois, there are a lot of exciting things that are going on, and given that we are in the AMRIN territory, we have been fortunate to have been at the table with AMRIN in not only helping them structure their energy efficiency portfolio, but I've been asked to co-chair the, with their Energy Efficiency Director and Director of Strategy, to co-chair their southern, which is, so they pretty much cover the southern part of our state. And there's a group of stakeholders that are required by statute to advise these utilities on how to structure their energy efficiency portfolio. So, one of the things that happened a few months ago, had a meeting with AMRIN, and what they wanted to do, it wasn't just RPC, there were other organizations that they met with, they wanted to get a better understanding of what it is that we do as an organization, and how they could either partner with us or leverage what we already do in terms of what they have to do with their energy efficiency portfolio. So, we talked about our Planning and Community Development Division, talked about a lot of the programs that are within our Community Services Division. And so, as a result, some of the, what you've heard reported this morning, is that we will be working with AMRIN through our Planning and Community Development Division to help them track the various indicators for a range of programs that they're going to be administering throughout their territory. So, we'll be leveraging the expertise of our division, looking at more from a sustainability perspective. We're also developing some other initiatives related to workforce. As I said, this is a $7 billion industry nationally, and there is a need for more development of workforce at all levels, from people that actually would go into a home, do energy audits, as well as do installations, to more higher-level roles. And so, we are in conversations with the university, as well as with AMRIN, to see how we can leverage our workforce and innovation program, and how we can create a pilot that would help to create energy efficiency jobs here in the Champaign County area. So, that's a very exciting prospect. We are also looking at other pockets of our communities, such as Garden Hills, for instance, and we've been in conversations with the city of Champaign and AMRIN to see what some of the other initiatives that we could focus on in some of our areas within the county. As a result of this type of expansion, which is quite a bit in a one-year period, I think at the last meeting, I reported to you that we are assessing our space needs. You know, we, with all this new funding, and granted, some of it is one-time, the other funding would be on an ongoing basis, clearly, there's a need for us to grow our capacity so that we can fulfill the requirements of all these resources that we're pursuing. And so, space is one of the things that we have to take into account. And we are doing an exhaustive assessment of our existing space here at Brookins, but also looking at the space in our outlying areas, our head start facilities, and other locations that we have, to ensure that we not only maximize our space, but that we're able to structure and locate our staff appropriately within the space that we have available to us. So, we will continue to plan along those areas. We also want to make sure that we continue to engage our businesses in the Champaign County area, and as a result, we are looking at fulfilling a position that will enhance our business engagement, not only for workforce, but for the other areas that we are involved in as the Regional Planning Commission. And then, clearly, public policy engagement. We are, we exist in a public policy arena. Most of the resources that we receive are government grants, both state as well as federal. And so, it's important for us to be at the table and to ensure that our representatives are aware of what it is that we are doing and the needs that we have in our respective community as a whole. And so, we will be going on the trip next week, well, actually, Monday, to DC, and I'm very excited to be part of that trip. Been at other trips previously and have established a very good relationship with our respective members of Congress. And in particular, just to report to you, I know that Congressman Davis was very supportive of our Community Services Block Grant funding, which has been marked up for a $50 million increase nationally. And he was one of 15 members of Congress to sign onto a letter urging the appropriators within the House to increase that particular piece of funding. And so, that's as a result of having that relationship, not just with RPC, but the other organizations that are in his district. The other one he's also been supportive of, as you know, we do have an opioid crisis in our state, and I think there is an opioid response plan that the state has put together. And I'll be honest with you, it is an area that I'm still trying to understand as to, you know, what role we could play. We've had conversations with the mental health board, but there is legislation that has been proposed in Congress, both in the House and the Senate, to actually appropriate funding to organizations that are Community Services Block Grant recipients, which we are one of them. And this would be competitive funding at the tune of $50 million, and it would be administered through the Department of Health and Human Services, and the funding would be used to help to respond to this crisis. And so, we did reach out to Congressman Davis to, and he signed on to support, to actually be a cosponsor of that piece of legislation in the House. So, the one thing I forgot to mention besides public policy engagement is our continued engagement of our member agencies. And, you know, as you've heard from Rita's report, the various activities and grants that I think we have applied for through the Illinois Department of Transportation that we hope to enhance some of the work that you're doing within your respective jurisdictions. With that said, the two things, the other two things I wanted to highlight is that hopefully, by the end of this year, we will be releasing an annual report for the Regional Planning Commission so that the community has a sense of the activities and the role that this organization has in the community. One of the things that I always come across when I'm meeting with individuals is that, "Well, you guys do, either you do so much, or I only understand this aspect of what you do as an organization or a component of the county." And so, we're hoping that the annual report will help to illuminate a lot of the things that we are doing and hopefully, open some other opportunities for us as an organization. The last thing would be that, as you know, we have moved to our new location for the Youth Assessment Center, and we are planning a ribbon-cutting event, I believe it's sometime in August, August, I think.
August 9th.
August 9th. And so, there'll be more information that we'll be sending out to you about that. We're very grateful that it's a program that is making a difference in our community, and certainly, we want to take the opportunity to highlight the successes of it and the outcomes that we are seeing within that program by having this ribbon-cutting event later on this year. With that, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, Dalitzo? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, Dalitzo, hi. This is a little bit tangential, but with your, with our interactions with AMRIN, is the Regional Planning Commission pretty happy with the response of AMRIN to do, to work with low-income housing families to allow subsidies for utility bills?
So, is your question, are we satisfied with AMRIN's?
Doing enough for us.
Are they doing enough? Well, I think we could always do more, all right? I mean, in Illinois, if you look at the households that would be eligible to receive utility assistance, it's about 1.2 million households. And I think with the resources that we have, both federal as well as state resources, which actually do come from the regulated utilities, we're only able to serve literally under 400,000 households. So, I think it's about maybe 40, 38% is what we're able to serve. So, we can always do more. There are a lot of, there are more families who are in need, and really, if you're looking at it at 150%, there are more families that are above 150% that would need assistance, but given the restrictions that are there for some of these programs, we're not able to serve those families. So, I think that with these energy efficiency resources that have been made available, in some respects, those are, will allow AMRIN or organizations like ours to actually help households that are above the 150% of income threshold. We could actually go up to 300% of income. And so, I think that in some respects, that will help a lot of families that we're not able to traditionally serve with the resources that we receive.
So, I'm wondering if, in our conversations, in your conversations with this big utility, whether we've taken an advocacy approach to increasing the assistance to these communities?
Absolutely. Every year, we provide information to not only the state, but we share that with our regulated utilities in terms of how many, you know, households we're not able to serve that either came through our doors, but we ran out of funding. So, we know that there is a greater need to serve, and so, we will continue to provide that information to them. But I think by having this relationship with them right now, with what we're doing with RPC, this is a learning opportunity for them as well, you know, in terms of what we're doing and who we serve in our community, and what else they can do as a utility. And so, some of these projects that we are proposing to them will allow us and them to not only serve, but get a better understanding of how to effectively address the needs of our community, particularly households that are paying, a lot of the households that are income-eligible are paying anywhere up to 30% of their income towards the utilities.
Right.
So, if you're on fixed income and you're paying 30%, you know, that's a lot going towards just utilities. And so, these projects and activities hopefully can mitigate some of those expenses that these households experience on an ongoing basis.
So, as we become better and better friends with this utility, I hope that they interact with us in a way that results in a solution.
Hopefully, yes. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, very good. I'll be reminded, need to get a motion, except for I filed a program to do some updates.
Someone?
Move by Ms. Hyden.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGuire.
Or opposed?
Aye.
Or opposed? Okay. Okay, the final item, I don't think, and there's no A.O. business need to cover, new business, there's one item.
No, go ahead.
Rebecca Malle resigned from the RPC. I think she had a new job somewhere where it rains less. She was in the second year of a two-year period, so for that reason, I think it's best that we wait a couple of months, then we advertise for a position, otherwise, you end up appointing somebody, then two months later, doing the same thing. So, that's what I'd like to do, so we'll fill it in this fall. It's final.
My experience with the last few times we've done this is it actually took a while, so maybe the appointment ought to be this fall, but you might want to start advertising and doing all this stuff.
The first thing I'll do is find out what we did last time, and look at that calendar. I agree with you totally. I do want to look at the calendar from last time first, before I say what we're going to do.
Sir.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, just a personal comment for the city of Urbana. Yesterday, the 21st of June, marked the 185th anniversary of the founding of the city of Urbana. That was June 21st, 1833. When they were searching for a seat for the Champaign County that was just being formed from the western section of Vermillion County at that time, the most likely seat location was going to be on the north side of the Old Grove, which was here in this central part of Illinois. Why? Because they had a post office and they had more people there. But Isaac Bucy, a landowner here, and also William Weber and his son Thompson Weber, invited the commissioners who were making the decision from Springfield to come down to the Bucy Cabin overnight and enjoy a little bit of refreshment. But they sweetened the deal by offering 40 acres of their own property for the site of downtown. And when the morning light came up, and this was like solstice, it's got to be a significant thing, 5:00 in the morning, they went out and put a stake in the ground and said, "That's the site of the new courthouse for Champaign County." So, we're celebrating that interesting and most unique fact this year, and yesterday was the day. Just like to share that with you.
Thank you. I'm sure solstice had something to do with it.
I'm sure, it's very magical.
Any other things we need to discuss? Okay, King Adam, Richard, thank you.